We're dealing with budget and we're gonna get started right away. But before we do, I do want to, just want to give a quick thank you to everybody that did have a part in this, in the process, writing up their budgets, sitting in concerns. We appreciate that. Also, I'm going to ask and remind people, though we all have different views, I'm gonna remind this to the council, though we all have different views, we're on the same team. We, we're all trying to get to the same destination. We all want what's best for Burlington, so I think, we just need to keep that in mind. Different people think different ways, but we all are on the same team, we're on the same train, so let's, let's remember ultimately, it comes down to what's best for Burlington. So, with that being said, if you, if you don't have anything to open up with, I, I was, I thought the quickest way to, to get to where we're going tonight would be to start with cuts, and as you're, as you're reading off your cuts or whatever, if you want to address what, what you think they're for, but I think, I think addressing the cuts first and then seeing, and then come into a consensus on what we want to, what we're satisfied with, or what we're going to come to an agreement with, for added personnel, that sort of thing. So, we started down that end last time.
Oh.
Do you want to start, so?
Alright, so are we giving everything? Cause I don't have, I don't-
Just whatever you've got that, that you feel like would be pertinent for tonight.
Alright. Well, I, I don't think that we should cut anything as of right now. I think what we have is put together. On staffing, there's nothing I would want more than to have more six police officers and six firefighters, and maintain the staffing at the end of the cops grant, and even summer nuisance help. And I have heard a lot more back from individuals saying they would support a tax increase. So, it's hard for me to say, I guess, which one we should go with, or if we decide as a council, what's best. I, I don't think the, the one and one is really enough, one officer, one firefighter. It wouldn't, to me, that's not gonna offset overtime, or whatever we're trying to get rid of. I think there needs to be more. So whether it's all six, the whole, the whole thing, or somewhere in the middle, such as, you know, three officers, three firefighters, it just, I don't know, I guess I'd like to hear what everyone else has going on, but that's it for me.
Okay. We're gonna do the budgeting first, Mr. Skinner.
I don't have any cuts to offer. The, if I did, they'd be nickel and dime, and they're not gonna address the issue that we have long-term. I would reiterate what I said Monday night, is we have to make a commitment, along with approving this budget, that we will discuss the best way to handle losses at Memorial Auditorium, look at the possibility of selling city-owned properties, such as the depot, community fill, the Flynn Hills Golf Course, see if it's, if it, if it's to our benefit, or to the community's benefit to do that, or not. We don't know, sitting here and not doing anything about it. I've looked, I'd still support looking into privatizing some of those things that we, that we do, like wastewater treatment, water, freshwater, and library services. And they may or may not pan out to be a financial benefit to the, to the community and the taxpayers, but we don't know if we don't look. The other thing that I feel more strongly about than ever, after having multiple discussions, and that is the introducing the franchise fee. A lot of people have said it won't pass, a lot of people said it will pass, but I think if we put it in the right perspective, and this was a recommendation that I received today via an email, we have given away a lot of property tax, through tax abatements, through TIF, for, for private businesses, and there's one that won't be paying property taxes for like 20 years. This is a way to get part of that back, and it was suggested that if we do the, if we do go with the franchise fee, that we ask for the full 5%. We use what's necessary to fund the public safety positions that we desperately need, and the remainder goes to property tax relief, just like we do with the local option sales That may make it more palatable, and it may make it the only way we have to, to fund the, fund all of the positions. I know this year, we're, we're just needing to do the, two police officers and firefighters, and following the progression that the police chief had put through on, on his, but I think it's one that, I, I think it's one that, when we approve this budget, that we need to say that's the direction we can take, that's how we can fund it. I don't, the, what Jim has presented in, in the property tax increases, I think they're going to be, that's going to be noticed, you're gonna, you pay your property taxes, most people, twice a year. The, the taxes on your utilities, you're paying once a month, it's not as, as big a bite. Probably dollar for dollar, and then using the math that I've, that I've used, it, it comes out about even. And that's my position at this point. I'm not saying I won't look at whatever everybody else wants to present, but that's where I'm at.
I'm gonna give you, just, I'm gonna be brief, give you a quick look inside, inside my brain, but I've got, I've got two things, but I do want to say this, when we're, when we're doing these cuts, we're not just looking at the numbers, you just can't go across to look at the numbers. I know that some people are. When you do that, you're, you're really taking a chance at making some huge mistakes, because that's not what a, a community consists of. Just if you, if you go on the computer, you can Google the, the top cities in Iowa. Actually, I, I Googled, I found out, you can find out who's moving in Iowa, who's moving out, who's moving to this area, and who's moving out, and why they're not moving, the, you can get those, those numbers on the computer, the movers, the haulers, they have all that stuff. And so, you're not seeing a lot of people moving into, moving into other states, what you're seeing is a lot of interstate moving around, and actually, it's kind of at a decline for Iowa. You're starting to see people getting bolstered up, and they're moving to warmer climates. So, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is I'm looking at, what can we do to sustain what we have, what can we do to make people that are looking at moving, because a lot of the movement is happening interstate? How can we make Burlington look attractive with our peers, those sort of things? And when you go to Burlington, it says, "What's great about Burlington?", it pops up, you'll see Perkins Park or Snake Alley, that's usually the top one, and then you have a few mixed in there, I don't see a lot. And I, and I just want to say this again, I know we need to address a problem, but I've never gone to a city, and, and the first thing that I checked was, you know, what kind of crimes are there going on in the community? I'm just throwing that out there, because I don't want people to just flip out and say, "We've gotta have 100 men on the, on the ground." We don't need 100 men, but we do need to add some. I agree with that. Alright, that being said, I looked at Don Fitting, how bad do we need recycling? I, I have to ask, this number stands out, it says recycling service fee, $4,222,670, what does that mean? What is recycling costing the city of Burlington? Is it something that we can maintain, or is that, is that some money that we can, maybe we need to say goodbye to recycling, and-
Well, we're a member of the Solid Waste Commission. State has regulations that stipulate that each entity, each municipality, has to strive and meet certain reduction from, I think it was 1989, somewhere around there, in the eighties, there was a solid waste flow stream from your entity going into a landfill, they wanted to conserve space, so the legislature set reduction goals that you were to shoot for, you had to submit reports, you had to add tracking of this, that, and the other, and one of the choices that were made by most communities is to group together in a commission-type format, which is what we did with our other member communities in the Solid Waste Commission. And the commission tracks those numbers for us, so we're partners with all of these other communities in this commission. If we were to stop being a member, there is an exit procedure that needs to be followed, and I believe, I don't know that we've ever actually looked at that, but it's a very expensive venture. There's a community recently, that, very, very small community, that I think unincorporated, and they're removing themselves, and they're paying the Solid Waste Commission, or they're going to be paying the Solid Waste Commission, a dollar amount that I don't think that they recognized or realized in doing what they're doing. But for us, to leave the commission would be a very, very expensive, it's, there's a, there's a format to be followed, but you have to pay the commission monies, because there's exposure to the commission for the landfill, the waste that goes into the landfill, post-closure cost, there's a formula that's set up, it would be a very, very expensive venture for us to do that.
My best guess is one and a half to three, somewhere between one and a half and $3 million exit fee to get out of that, and that would be a step that you'd have to take to get out of the recycling program.
But what is it costing us per year?
And then, and then on top of that, then we would become an entity on our own, that we would have to comply with state regulations with regards to solid waste reduction, tracking that mechanism, we'd have to do that work ourselves.
That is part of the utility bill that customers pay, so the recycling fee is, what on a monthly basis per each resident?
I think it's currently $3.55, going up to 10 cent by 10 cents on July 1st.
To $3.65, so that, that's, that's a part of your, of every resident's fee. The city itself doesn't, outside of what would be on any of our separate bills that we might have, doesn't have a, a cost for the recycling program.
So, we're locked in, or, or we're-
Well, there's a fee, it's a, there's a cost to get out, and it's a pretty expensive-
But you can get out.
But this is costing us, this is costing us $422,000 a year?
Doesn't, it's, doesn't cost us, it's a-
That's what I'm saying, I'm just trying to find out, what is, what does it cost us, what does it cost us as a community to do this? What's the budget number for?
Well, I think, I think our, I think in my breakdown, my presentation, I think it was something like $422,000 was going to be the total charge to the city of Burlington over the fiscal year 2018. That's based on 9,650 households paying $3.65 a month for 12 months, that's what we would pay, and that covers the curbside collection program, that covers their processing and selling of the materials, that covers the household hazardous chemical facility at the landfill, the use of it, their education program.
I'm just saying, I, I just think it's something that we need to look at anyways, we, I think we need to, instead of, you know, knowing that it's a lot, I, I would like to entertain that, just because I, my green bucket that you buy for five bucks or whatever, it got broke like six years ago, and I've been meaning to go out there and get one, and in six years, I've made it out there to get one, even though I go out there to the recycling place to drop off my recyclables, and-
Right.
I was just curious, is this, is this something that we gotta have, because we really need to start looking at those things? I guess right now, there's, there's no sense in, in keeping any longer and delaying, but other than this-
Don, wouldn't it make sense, though, we would save money if we recycled more? And then, take some of the tonnage off of the tipping fees?
The tipping fees would go down if people would recycle more, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other place that I had for cuts is the auditorium. I am not, I'm not for shuttering the auditorium. I think it means too much to the community, and I think we really need to give some, pump the brakes on that. What I am for is terminating our relationship with Venue Works. I think they've had a plan, long enough time to, to give it the try, and I just don't think, I think they're a good company, I just don't think they're good for Burlington and for the venue that we've got. I'd like to get rid of, I'd like to shut Venue Works, actually, it's gonna sound cold, but I'm thinking about trying to get police officers and a new detective, but I would like to, I would like to cut ties with Venue Works as soon as possible. It's a, their actual, their actual budget was one, this was the actual, $188,314, they're budgeted for $191,000, that's what money we're paying them for payroll and benefits and management fees. That gives us, that gives us some help your way, and I, I feel comfortable about that. As far as running it for the rest of the year and taking care of the rest of the commitments, I believe we've got staff in place that can do that. That's it. Everything else, I've gone through, I've gone through several times. I feel like you start, you start cutting it, and I could give my spiel, and I've got, if anybody wants to see this, what the process that I went through to come up with this, send me an email, and I will email you, the email that I emailed to myself that has all of these links, the, the information that I read, about communities that are getting smaller in Iowa, and the ones that are growing, about the things that, that help communities sustain themselves, those sort of things, which I think is important, I'm turning to the person that I used to discuss to me. That was-
I'm just glad it wasn't my computer this time.
Anyway, that being said, I'm gonna go back to what I said before, I don't believe that anything was asked was over the line, nothing. I know, I believe it's something that they need. I don't believe that we can do it any other way but with a tax increase, and I'm against tax increases. I'm, I'm still on the state platform that I ran on, and you guys re-elected me, that's your fault. I said, "I want to protect that tax line, I want to protect the young kids, the youth, I want to stand up for them," and I said something really sophomoric and, and young, but I was, you know, "I want there to be music in the streets." Well, there's no music in the streets, but I do want to hold the line on the stuff that I said, I, I think we need to hold the line on that. The only way that we're gonna get this done and meet this need, and I think the, the only one that I can get my hands around, and the people, my constituents, the emails I'm getting, are the franchise fee. People are saying that they would rather have, do that, have it spread out, so that other people, a person said this to me, well, actually, we were talking, and this came out in the conversation, I don't know who said it, he said, "Well, with the franchise fee, a person that could be paying some of that money could be somebody that we're arresting." I said, "Hey, you know, help us pay a bill that may put your butt in jail tomorrow." Well, everybody gets to pay on that, and, yeah, I wish I would've censored myself a little bit better before I started this spiel, but that's where I'm at, that's where I'm at. We don't make this happen long-term and sustain it without a franchise fee that is set aside just for the police officers and firefighters, whatever we're gonna get, and it's that alone, and whatever they go over, we go back to tax relief. Outside of that, I can't get down with anything, I can find, you know, a little over $200,000, and I would ask you to work your magic on that. That's all I've got, everything else, I wouldn't take anything from anybody, we're gonna pay for it. I am for adding the additional, was it $22,000, I think you had on the budget for the, for the nuisance, I'm all in on that, I think that, that's going to be a help. That's where I am. Help me see the light, Mayor Protem.
I concur with what Councilman Scott and you have said about looking into the things that we need to check on, the auditorium's a prime example, and as far as the golf course is concerned, we've talked about that at some length before, and, and I'm all, I'm all in for that, I, I think we should be doing that, we should be doing that on a regular basis, and that's one of the things that, like I said, I want it to be one of our goals for this, this year. But I think it takes a lot of in-depth, we just can't pull the trigger and say tonight, "Well, the auditorium, you're done, Venue Works, you're out of here." Because we can't, we can't prove that we can do it any better ourselves.
I think we did.
Until we do some in-depth look at it. I don't think we can, that's just my personal opinion. As far as where my position is right now, I, I'm in favor of adding a police officer, so, so the chief can put another detective on, to relieve the stress on those detectives. Looking at these options, police chief made a recommendation, he suggested two officers, two officers, two officers, but that was the starting point, that was his recommendation. I'm okay with that, but I don't think we can afford it, we just don't have the money for that. As far as putting the franchise fee up for a vote, I'm okay with that. If the public wants to support that, then, fine, let's do it. It gives us a different stream of revenues and can help us get to where we want to be. Right now, my suggestion is this, I'm going to say, we're gonna keep $50,000 from the library, cut $20,000 from the economic development, add 10 cents to the, to the property tax levy, and add that, that police officer, and that should be able to handle it. 10 cents to the property tax, add the police officer, and keep the two cuts from the library and economic development. That's my recommendation.
Mr. Fleming.
Am I next?
Yep.
I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but I'm strongly opposed to a franchise tax. First of all, I don't know how you can do a lot of planning, counting on that income for your budget, and you find out it's defeated, I don't know how you get around that, be that as it may. I think I have a responsibility as a councilman to make these tough decisions along with the other four, and it'd be nice if the public could come in on every issue we have, but that isn't the way the system's set up, so, so I'm opposed to that, I guess you all know that by now. I guess I haven't changed where I was a couple days ago, I mean, I think with a very modest price, or tax increase, we could put two new police officers in the system and one fireman. Those numbers are not sacred, and I know the police and fire would like to have more than that, obviously, but to me, this would be a giant step in the right direction to address public safety in this community. I think a 74, 75 percent of our budget is personnel, and a big chunk of that is police and fire. And there are these other cuts we can make, and the ones that Jim pointed out, I can accept those, I don't have a problem with any of those. But I'd still like to go ahead and not have a franchise tax deal, and go ahead and do what we should be doing anyway.
This option then, Jim, is this is right, what Bob, Mr. Fleming's suggestion would be the, the third option down the page, two officers, add an additional firefighter, and a nuisance inspector?
No.
No?
Well, I, I'm not strong on that.
Okay.
Either way, I can go with that.
Alright, so that, that would be 46 cents to the levy, or a little bit less if you didn't add the nuisance inspector, right? And then we could take out, and take out the nine cents that we'd save from the library and the economic development.
That's about what, 2%?
36, 36 cent levy increase would be closer to 3%.
The way I figure is 2.5%, but give that as a hedge.
I'm doing ballpark, so.
Yeah.
One of the things that Eric mentioned with the nuisance, we're not, as he's thinking through the fees, we don't know how many nuisances he would process, but that, if you had an extra person in there, if they were able to process 50, no, is it 100 nuisances? No, you were saying 50, it was, we're just talking-
We abated 50 that came to council.
If you abated 50 that came to council, that, which is processing several more than that, but you got maybe 5,000 in revenue from that. You also, you also mentioned the potential to raise on your, what fee?
Rental fee. Currently, we have two officers, inspectors that do rentals, the fees collected don't quite cover one full-time officer, they're paying benefits. If we raised it $10 a unit, that'd be an additional 10 to 13,000, depending on how many rentals we inspected a year.
So you could talk about coming close to netting on that position with a fee increase on the rental permit process, which may be, which may be a valid thing to try to do as, as a group. And if you did that, you know, you'd pull down the cost with what you're talking about, Bob, or even what you're talking about, from what I had shown on those sheets, by that 20,000.
Yeah, good.
But, yeah, you're still talking, I don't know, 30 cent property tax increase to accomplish that.
Which percentage-wise, is less than 3.
If we're, yeah, if we're at 15, that's about, I'm sorry, that's about 2, if we're at 1590, so, it's about 2.
We're about 2, 2.5%.
But it's where you've all come together on this.
Haven't heard a lot of consensus so far.
I'd, I'd like to see, I'd like to see protected money, I'd like to see if we're gonna do this, that these positions are protected. I, I think the franchise fee does that, I, I think, in so many ways, it, it's just, it's just perfect for this situation.
I'm just-
And maybe I'm wrong, I've gotten one, one email back today that-
I'm just concerned that if we bank, if we put all our hopes into that one thing, and it doesn't come through-
I haven't, I came with about $200,000 in cuts, you know?
Right.
That's what I've got, those are my two options, so, I mean, it's not like I'm banking on that, I'm saying, "I'd love to give the police chief what he wants, and I'd like to help the firemen out," you know?
Yeah.
And that's gonna take a greater commitment, and a long-time commitment, is what I'm-
I think it wouldn't, I mean, not that, to say that we need to do both, a small tax increase and the franchise fee, but if we chose one of these options, whether it be three officers, maintain the cops grant, and three firefighter personnel, you know, that's a lot, it's lower than jumping right up to 6, 6, and nuisance help, because I have heard so much about the franchise fee not, not passing a vote, but you, you know, you both have made excellent points about it's, would be similar amounts, but spread out, so it doesn't hit you hard. And I don't think a lot of, I don't think a lot of people think about it that way.
I'm getting people that are just coming right out, saying, "Tax us, let's just go ahead and raise taxes."
Yeah, I have too.
And I think probably the only people that are reaching out to me saying, "Let's do franchise fee," are people that already know that I'm against raising taxes, so they're saying, "Let's, let's do it that way," maybe that may be part of it, but I'm probably getting 90% of my emails, and I know that you guys are getting some of them, because some of them are just to the council, all of us are getting, are saying, "It's okay to, to pay extra for, for what they want." I think it comes down to, I guess, how we want to do it, with taxes again, we can raise taxes and say that they're gonna be for this, but another council can come in and, you know, say, "Hey, we need to cut here, and, you know, and just tear down everything that we did." I think that's something to think about as well. And again, that's our job, to think forward, thinking.
I kind of wonder if, as you were talking about different staffing within the PD, if it wouldn't hurt to have chief come forward and talk about the genesis of why he presented that request the way he did, what he's trying to accomplish with that, and what, what you would try to, what he would try to accomplish with, whether it was one or two positions, and whether it really is a CID person, or a different way that you would use those, if you were doing those reduced levels?
I think the most important thing to mention again is when we talk about six, I mean realistically, you're talking three or four years down the line. Not to say that it doesn't have to be sustained, and it has to be sustainable, but I think try to kind of put that into perspective as we go. You know, as I pointed out that matrix to you, at a minimum, at a minimum, we have three replacements, and probably by this time next year, in 18, there would be a total of four replacements, that have to be replaced just to keep us at 43, and that's why I propose to add two.
Four by when?
Four, I'm confident we'll have four replacements by this time next year, in 18, and three of those are gonna come relatively soon, I mean, soon as in probably the next couple months. So, as we talk about that, we, we have to consider what it's gonna take to, to even keep us where we're at, that's part of this discussion, that's why I brought that forward. And so if we were to add two people to that, granted, it adds to the budget, but it could soften the blow as we move forward for these unexpected, "Hey, I'm gonna go work for another department." You know, where right now, when you're at absolute minimums, and those people walk in your door, I mean, right now, here in just a few weeks, we're gonna be set back to 40 people, and we've budgeted for 43. And so as we move forward, I think it's, it's just extremely important, when we talk about adding personnel, do you ever get to that- personnel, do you ever get to that level? And if we don't start to protect against that, we end up where we were last year and the year before with us trying to defend these streets with 36 people. And that, my friend, puts an ungodly stress on that department as we're going through right now. So, I mean, when I brought this proposal forward as being flexible, I mean, one of the biggest parts of this is what Councilman Davis is bringing forward, Davidson is bringing forward, is the add, "We gotta get another detective, but I have to staff those squads, 6, 6, and 6." So that would be our first priority if we add one person. Let's just say that that's all we can afford, and we can add one. That's the absolute number-one priority, 6 is on a squad, and add that fourth detective back. Without a doubt, that's where we're at as a department. But if we add two people, we get the detective back, now we got a squad of seven. We got the pop unit as two as a supplement, and now we got a seventh guy on a squad. And we would obviously, like I talked about, position that to the point of our most calls for service, but that's still another car that we can use data-driven policing. I mean, and I'm not talking about data over the past year, I'm talking about data this week, and assign that car to that area. And those things are gonna have an impact, you know? There's this major discussion, "Is this gonna eliminate crime?" No, it's not gonna eliminate crime. But what it will do is it adds a deterrent. It adds another factor that as you come into that neighborhood to maybe do something that you're planning on or you've planned to do, and there's a squad car, "Well, I can't do it today." "Oh, I'll do it tomorrow." There's the squad car, "I can't do it." And pretty soon, you do start to deter that. And how do we measure that? I don't know. I don't think anybody's, the only thing you can measure it against is what's happened in the past. But what are we preventing right now with a pop unit? I mean, really, I can show you what they've done for us on the front side, but really, what have they already prevented? We don't know. We don't know, but I can tell you it's effective. So, just in a brief overview, I mean, I'm trying to break this down, and it has to be sustainable over time, and I think that's why we have a plan. But at the same time, I think we have to think about the here and the now, and what's realistic for the here and the now. And what that is, is we got three policemen we have to replace, and if we add a policeman in about 10 months from now, or less, depending on if we can get a couple certified guys, we could get that detective back. That's the here and the now. And so as we move forward, as you look through the matrix, you can see how these other things are just gonna benefit us as we go forward. So I hope I broke that down a little bit. If I missed something, feel free to ask.
This is, I just want to, this is where I, I'm hoping that we continue to invest in, and I know you guys have gotten a good start. They had an article about gun violence drops in Cedar Rapids, you hear about that? I'm always looking at Iowa, because I like compare apples to apples, and, you know, what's happening in California or for them doesn't always work for us. But it already started, overall crime in the rise in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. So-called gun violence has dropped significantly last year. The success is not a result of new gun control laws, but rather a new policing strategy that focuses attention on individuals who are the most likely to commit crimes with a gun.
Absolutely.
It's steps, it's kinda similar to what we got started, and to me, I think those are great investments. If you're gonna read the article, again, shot, number of shots fired in Cedar Rapids dropped by 14% compared to the year before. This isn't with a bunch of, a bunch of people driving around in cars again. This is with some police officers, get to know who the people are. And I just wanna say this, I'm just throwing this out there, because I think this is important, and I'm, I'm all in for investing in this. The kid, I know you've heard about this, you did, I don't know what it is, I'm bad with years, but that guy, he was slow, mentally handicapped, and everybody knew him in the neighborhood. He's a big guy, though. He's a big man. And he would, loved the police officers, wanted to be a cop, and the police would come, and they'd, a police area and stuff like that, he would run up on them and try to give them a hug and stuff, "Hey, if they all knew him, I can't remember his name, I can't remember his name." Well, they had a new cop, and the new cop didn't get the proper training, he was in this area, he didn't know. This guy, the guy was coming up on him to give him a hug, probably just like he does with all the police officers. This guy got scared, shot him because he didn't know. And I think that's a small story to say how important, I think, things like this are, and I just think we need to continue, I'm just throwing this out there, I think we need to continue as we hire new people to invest in programs like this, letting our police get into those problem areas. I think it'll pay huge dividends for us. I think it's already started to. I think we just need to be mindful that we need to stay committed to that, too.
Well, it's something we haven't discussed a lot, when you talk about adding personnel, but that's the officer safety portion of this. I mean, I can show you right now, basically countless videos of armed encounters that officers are handling all by themselves. And I'm here to tell you, knock on wood, because those are dangerous, dangerous situations. In the last two weeks, the last two weeks, we have arrested individuals that were armed in four different encounters. And these encounters are done by, at least the initial part of the encounter by one officer. And so when you got four or five guys working the streets, I mean, that's just something we all need to keep in the back of our minds, that help might not be just around the corner in Burlington, Iowa. And so as we talk about trying to keep the department staffed, let alone adding staffing, and that's, that goes to my point of getting behind and not being able to catch up.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, just keep that in your mind when we talk about adding people, it's trying to maintain staffing as well.
Yeah.
I mean, we just held a test. We had seven people, seven people apply for three positions. And we're not talking about a job that doesn't pay anything. We're talking about a job that pays a good wage for this area, great benefits, and when I took the test, almost 30 years ago, there were no openings and 300 applicants. Seven people, let me make myself clear, seven people that they knew were three positions. So it's gonna become a crisis, ladies and gentlemen, and that's just the bottom line. And we need to try to, as best as we can, put on what we can afford and get out in front of this thing as best we possibly can. And I don't mean to say that to try to sway our position. I put together a plan I thought had some fiscal responsibility built into it. So that's not my point. That's a reality, okay?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Just, me personally, I absolutely, totally agree with him. However, we don't have $420,000 to cover two police officers and the safer grant. What we can come up with is the money to get him, is one officer, to get the detective, put the franchise fee up with this parameters, and by the time that's passed and ready to go, we'll have the money so he can put on the staff that he needs. But for right now, to fit our timeline for this budget, I'm still saying, we authorize that one, we increase the property tax by 10 cents, and we make those two cuts, and we've got it paid for, for that one officer now.
See, I'm kinda like you. I could, I could go for at least that, because we've gotta do something, and I know how important that detective position's going to be, but let's pay for it without a property increase. Venue Works has had three years. They've tried. It's just not the community for it. I think we're just asking too much out of the auditorium. I don't think it's Venue Works. It's, the auditorium's just not, it's just not gonna happen for this area, for that building. So let's just let it go back to what we've done before. Let's see if we can add to that, let's see if we can learn from some, from some things, but if we stop the bleeding with Venue Works, because we're just going to, in two years, we're just going to say no. Why, why don't we do it now and address the problem? No tax increase. We need to let Venue Works go. God bless them, but we need to let them go.
I have a question.
And that's almost $200,000.
How much is, how much was the auditorium costing us on an annual basis before Venue Works?
The most previous couple of years was 290 to 300,000 a year.
300,000 a year.
And this budget's built with them being at 360,000 net cost, and they may not hit that target, but...
Right.
If we were to, and when we were doing that, I think we had three personnel down there, and that was, that's based on the wages from three years ago, and now you're going into next year, so you're going four years later wage scale. Most likely, if you're hiring personnel back into those positions, they may be at the low end of the, of the scale for the positions, but the title positions are still gonna be in this, on a, pretty close to the same levels as they were before. You could staff it differently, but that, the staffing that we had down there before, the savings isn't gonna be a huge amount. It should be some, but it isn't gonna be a huge amount.
I mean, I think the, looking to the future, I think the auditorium is something we definitely should look at, with or without Venue. I don't think Venue Works is the key to this. Like you say, it's been a money loser for years.
That's true. So if it has, and it's proven that in three years, that it's not gonna be able to work, we should cut ties now instead of waiting for two years.
In a way, you're not hearing me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cutting them isn't gonna solve the problem. We're averaging 290 to 300,000 dollars expenses before they even got to town. So terminating their deal is not gonna save you that much money. Secondly, to fit it into a budget that we're supposed to get locked into, when, next week or the week after, I don't know how you go to people like Venue Works and say, "Get out of here," even though they've made commitments to, and so forth. They've got financial exposure.
We already made an agreement with them in advance, that if it didn't work within three years, that we could cut ties. We made that agreement so that if things got ugly...
With notice.
Right, right. Well, I'm not saying break any rules. Give them the notice that they need. That's just where I'm coming from. Again, we're on the same team, we're trying to get to the same place. Just have different thoughts, guys.
And until we investigate it, I can't go along with that, because we don't know what we're gonna say.
I think we considered, we considered shuttering. I mean, it came up in conversation, shuttering the auditorium.
Yeah, and I'm in all in favor of investigating it, but I just don't think, I'm agreeing with you, Mr. Fleming, we, you can't count that as part of your budget right now, because it's not a given.
The only other thing I had to look into, as far as I was concerned, was looking at recycling. Everything else was nickel and dime. I didn't feel like it was really doing us any good to make any adjustments, so...
Who's next?
Let's start doing some tapering.
I appreciate your efforts, Mayor, but I don't think there's any way we would save the $200,000 either. I mean, there's still, those same expenses are still gonna exist, somebody else is going to have to do them. Can we, we need to look and see if we can save money by managing ourself, but I don't, there's no way we would save the $200,000. And the recycling thing, we're obligated to do that at this point. We're, we're not obligated, we're mandated. Maybe not the recycling program, but we have to have some means of reducing waste that goes into the landfill, based on the 1989 analysis. And we were required, I think, in the first 10 years or whatever it was, to reduce it by 25%, and then we were required to reduce it another 25%. And that, and to do that, the only thing we were able to come up was, was a recycling program. I don't like our recycling program. I think it's unnecessarily expensive and something that I absolutely think we should look at, but I don't think we can count on saving $400,000 from that in this year, and the next year, and the next year. There's still gonna be some expense there, but I think, I think we can absolutely look at it. I can't, I just, it's so difficult to wrap my arms around making the cuts that you offered, Jim, and Jim. The, I think, for one reason, if we're gonna hope to get a franchise fee passed, we don't need to be alienating anybody. And I'm looking at getting the problem that we have with staffing solved and not trying to piecemeal it together year after year after year. I think the franchise fee may be our only hope. Putting a detective in is, is great, it's needed, but it's not enough. And if we, if we make cuts to a couple of institutions that are very near to, and dear to people, we may not get the support that we need for that. And I know a lot of people have said that franchise fee won't pass, but a lot of people said the bond issue for the police department wouldn't pass either, and we got a 70% approval rating. People have stepped up for public safety, and I trust in them to know that we're in difficult times right now. And I don't think they're ones that are gonna last for decades. I think it's, I think we're in a, we're just in a bad, in a bad position in this country right now, and eventually, we're gonna work ourselves through it. Until then, we need some help. And as you pointed, as the Chief pointed out, when he applied for the position, there were 300 people looking for a job in law enforcement, and today, there were seven. The most recent, there were seven. When I, when I applied for the police department back in the 1980s, it was the same way. There were 300 people that, that applied, they had to open up another room, large room, so that we had enough room to get everybody in to take that test. What's, that's serious. That's, that's almost scary. And that, and from those 300 people, they were able to come up with 10 of them that could pass the test and move on to the next step. So when, if you use those numbers and those percentages of those seven, we'll be lucky that one of them qualifies to be an officer. Hopefully, qualified or certified officers will apply. I would be remiss not to mention the fact that, and I think this come to all the council, yeah, matter of fact, I know it did. We got a letter from Jason Hutchison, he's with the Chamber of Commerce, he's the director, and he's, it simply says, "Support for police officers." And you've all, all read it, and he's pointing out that the acts of violence within the community detours people from, from looking at our community, and it's, he's saying it's time to fully fund those positions that the Chief has asked for. He didn't say how to do it, but he did say to fully fund and support, and support his plan of action. And that's not just Jason saying that, there was actually a committee that was formed at the Chamber of Commerce to look at that. That speaks volumes to it.
As that group has met, they have, they've talked with the Chief to some extent, too, and they understand and recognize the level of what he's asking for in terms of the costs that would go with that, just to mention to your point. They, I don't think they've ever formally come up with a presentation for what to give to the council on that, but they are willing, as a group, they expressed a willingness to look at increased costs. And that's from the business community, that's not representative of the public as a whole, but that, that is a fairly solid message that's come out of a portion of our business
Well, I have some, I kinda wanna get down to, you know, what we wanna do. I mean, we've all keep voicing our opinions back and forth, back and forth, and there's three options for being able to either get more staffing or not at all, which is, one is nothing, and I don't think any one of us wants to do that. Another is the franchise fee, and the other is raising taxes. I mean, really, realistically, at this point in time, those, those two things are our options for getting more staffing right now.
Yeah, well, what we need to look at, though, is what staffing are we...
Okay, so then let's, let's get to that.
Yeah, that's what we need to get down is to...
And for me...
With, with cuts today, without accounting any franchise fee, what do we have?
Right, well, for me, I, it's either one would be all or nothing, which was, you know, the first example we were given, or kind of an in-between, which is three officers, three fire personnel, and maintaining the staffing at the end of the cops grant. I mean, those, to me, if we're gonna do this, we better, we should do it right. I don't see why we need to...
As far as going in the, in the terminology for the franchise, for a franchise fee, or for us to do that?
I guess just for what we decide on, you know, as far as, we have to figure out what kind of staffing we want, and then how are we gonna get there? So I guess we kind of need to decide what staffing we can all agree on.
Right.
And then step towards, I mean, we don't have that much time, and then step towards...
But I'm just trying to get a handle.
Right.
You're saying you're all or nothing, so just...
Well, either, either go all in and...
For, for six and...
Six, six.
For what everybody asked for?
Yeah.
Okay, or, or what has been presented?
Or a kind of middle ground, which would be 3-3, and maintaining, so it's, would be this one, right there.
Three and three, maintaining the cops grant.
Yeah, so...
I would point out that the, the Chiefs have asked for what they, what they need to provide the service. The fire chief took it one step further and has applied for a grant, and the, and the grant provided... And the, and the grant provides six officers, a portion of their salaries for three years that would actually save money over putting three officers on. And then he expressed a willingness to let three of those officers go through attrition at the end of that grant period. And so it's, it would be a mix, like you had said, not quite like the, the, the second.
Right.
Proposal, but would be a, a greater savings, it would be less than what, uh, what Jim has shown us as far as the, uh, the funding for the six and six. And, um, I, we, uh, and we wouldn't put this in the budget, uh, but we would amend the budget. If I'm Reggie Wright last Monday, we would amend the budget to cover these positions if the franchise fee passed, if we went with a franchise.
If you're doing it with a franchise fee. And I don't know if that's what you're suggesting or.
I'm, I'm afraid of putting all of our hopes into something that may or may not. I mean, you, you make excellent points. I would vote for it now that I've thought about it as it being spread out with small amounts. But I'm afraid that other people aren't going to think about it that way. So I, you know, I'd love to do it, but I would only want to do it, I mean, we could do it either way, but.
From what I'm hearing, the franchise fee will go, um, people want the, that's what I'm getting, I'm getting that. People want the extra, uh, they want the extra support. They, they want, uh, the extra staffing. For the majority, not everybody, but for the majority, that's what they're saying. And they're saying that they're willing to, uh, to pay extra for it. I dug, I looked through the budget. Uh, again, I don't believe in butchering your city to try to, to try to make something happen. I presented some cuts that I thought I weren't happy with, but, um, I felt like it was time to do that. And, uh, I'm not getting any, uh, any, any consensus or any support, uh, on those cuts. So I have to go back to, uh, whatever we do at the bare minimum. Let's get the chief, a detective, you know, at the bare minimum. But I, I as well am for, uh, moving forward with the franchise fee. I still think it's, it's, uh, uh, we wouldn't have to use that for everything. I don't think we would have to use that for, I think you can find a way to come up with the.
If you do that, according to the page two on this first handout that Jim gave us last week, one police officer maintained the staffing and the cops grant, additional levy of 18, 475. That's maintaining library and economic development. I honestly don't see why we need to keep funding economic development for $70,000. I honestly do not see why we need to do that. I, I think that's an easy 20,000, maybe $30,000 cut.
I'm cool with that.
But that would save us, um, three cents maybe if we did that. But, so if you, if you went to that and you, you'd have roughly a 15 cent, little or 16 cent tax increase, you could fund that one police officer, get your detective on, and not cut the library.
I just don't think that's enough.
I know, but how are you going to pay for the rest of it? And then you can put your franchise fee out there and say, if you want the rest of it, here's how we're going to pay for it. I don't see how you, I honestly, raising property taxes 60 cents this year, a dollar next year, a dollar and a half a year after, a dollar and a half a year after, a dollar 78, that's no good.
Right. I think we all agree with that.
Okay, uh, we've got about six minutes. Uh, can we, can we come up with, uh, with three people that are on the same page then? Because if this, again, what we want to, what we want to come up with is at least a, a, a format that we say this is what, this is what we're all, or at least the majority is willing to accept, uh, moving forward. And if all goes, doesn't go right, we're still at least content with what we've got.
I really, I, I just really feel like the three and three would be really just, I mean, because what they've asked for is what they need. Not what they want. No, well, I mean, if we're not going to go full force with it, the three officers maintain the cops grant and three fire.
Okay, so that means 78 cent tax increase and 88 cent, 88, 89, and a dollar in the next five years.
But no, that's not, that's not adding on, that's not adding those amounts each time, correct? No, so it would be 1671, and then next year it's 1682, and then next year it's 1682, 1682, and then last year, 2022, is 1695. It's not.
Yeah, it's a buck more than now.
So it's just a dollar more than now.
By 1522.
By, by 2022. I really, I just don't, I know it, it can be a lot.
You'd be in favor of doing a property tax at that level?
Yes.
Is any, does anyone else willing to go to a property tax levy of that, to do that?
And I don't see why we can't put the franchise fee out there to then get the rest of it. If we get it, then great, we can, we can give them what they need.
Is there, is there, am I the only one that's getting, but the franchise fee up?
I would do it if we can, if we can do the three and three.
Because I'm, I'm getting people that are bullied on the franchise.
I'm only hearing two of you willing to go to a property tax increase of that amount. Where do you, where can you get to a?
How high are you willing to go on property tax?
Two percent.
Here it is now. And then it, it doesn't increase that terribly much once we do the initial. I mean, it's, I'm just, I just don't think one is going to, I mean, it'll help, yes, but is it going to?
But see, that's my point.
Yeah.
It's one to get us to a, a temporary solution. And then you put the franchise fee vote out there. If it goes, great, then we can go all in for what, for what the rest of it is. But in this budget, for this time, you get one with a minimal, uh, property tax increase.
You had two police officers and one firefighter for two and a half percent.
I, I feel the same way you do. If we're going to have property tax increase, let's not play around with it. Let's get what we need. You know, if that's what you're going to do. I, I don't want to do that. Again, I, I feel like, I feel like this, this thing is screaming for a franchise fee. And I wouldn't say that on my own. That's all the emails that I'm getting is, let's do franchise fee. And again, I know that it, some of it may be catered to, because people know that I'm against taxes, but they're, people are saying that.
It might not pass. I had a man come up to me at Hy-Vee yesterday. Mr. Fleming, you in the council? Yep. Hope you'll view of that franchise fee. I said, really? Why? He said, because it won't pass. And he turned and walked away.
That's one person. And again, they said that the, the last, the last, uh, the last one that we went, they said that that wouldn't pass, no chance. And it did by an alarming, alarming amount. That tells me that our community, when it comes down to it, if they see, look at the budget, community. Look at the budget. Show me something that I can't see, because we're all looking at the same budget. And if you're saying, well, you can cut money here, go down and visit these places. Go down and visit these places. Spend some time and actually see, do, do you see areas where they could? Because something's going to suffer. Something's going to suffer. And I'm staying here. I don't want Burlington to suffer. I'm not leaving. Did you guys get that?
You might be.
Uh, no, no, I won't. I can guarantee you that. I'm not, I'm not leaving.
I don't see that you have a third council member on board with, with that type of a property tax increase.
What, my two percent or the other?
Hers.
The three and three.
To cover the three.
Because it does, you know, the initial increase.
And if you're going to do what you're suggesting, you would, it would make sense to do the Safer Grant application for six and then just reduce back to three after, after the grant was over.
Is there an option for that one?
I don't have that shown, but it'd be, it'd be comparable to that amount.
Yeah, that's the.
The odds of getting a Safer Grant, we all know.
But you have to find a solution that you can get three of you to agree to, and you're not getting a third one on this one.
Anybody want to argue their, their position?
I want to go two and one.
I've, uh, I've said what I want to do.
Well, we, we still have to come to a consensus of three people. Again, let's just, just let me get this down so I can understand it again. Annie, you're, you're all or nothing. You're as is or, or as, as asked for, right?
Well.
No, you're three and three, that's what you are.
Because it, it appears that I'm not.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask you, let me, I'm going to ask you to try to veer from that thought process.
Right. And that's exactly what I.
And go like you, with your gut. You said, you said all in, because here, we still need to have some continuity. This is what we're seeing, and I, I think it's proven. The chief said that. I believe him. I do believe that, that six with the Safer Grant is going to be just as cost effective even more so, I would think, and, and hoping so, and that he would cut loose. So if you're going to go with that, I, I think, can we all agree that we're better off doing the, doing the six firemen with the safer?
Oh, as far, so the three, six.
But we're out of time here, guys. You're supposed to be at another meeting.
All right, when are we coming back?
There's an economic development meeting that starts here at four, but they're, they're waiting for you. They're waiting for you to be done.
I think we're close. I think we're close.
You, if you're not getting the two on the property tax or getting more than the two on the property tax increase at that level, then what level can you get an, an agreement on to have some level? Because it seems like the other alternative is a, a lower staffing level that you can come to an agreement on with a s- more limited property tax increase. And you may have the ability to get folks to, uh, go beyond that to go out for an election to cover any additional staff beyond that. The, if you add though, for an example, three police officers with a property tax increase and then say that you would add more if you could have the franchise fee, your li- your likelihood of getting that funded is much less. If it was small before, going halfway with one and then leaving it halfway for the other makes it less likely to get done. At the same time, if you don't get a franchise fee through and you don't fund a position, fund positions, you're not getting it done.
You're not doing your job.
So we can have another budget meeting on Monday? Uh, if you wanted to do 3:30 again, or, I'm sorry, do 4:30 prior to the 5:30 council meeting? Or if you wanted to do it earlier than that?
We may do it earlier, honestly.
At like 3:30?
If that is early enough, yes.
I'm about, see, I'm good with any time, as long as.
I mean, I can, I can figure it out on my end.
Is that conflict with anything in the afternoon? I don't, I don't think it did for me, so. What time?
Monday, 3:30 maybe?
3:30 at least.
Okay, I think that works. All right. Thanks, everybody. We'll be back, Monday at 3:30.